Okay, good evening. Today is January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I'm calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Before we get into our agenda, I would like to take a moment of silence for Officer Rich Reddick. It's an incredible regret and sadness that we learned this weekend of his untimely passing, so please join me in a brief moment of silence. Maybe we all keep him, his family, and all those close to him in our thoughts and prayers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. A little stage pride.
What is happening?
So first we have the minutes of the special meeting from November nineteenth, the All Boards Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes for our regular meeting of December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Community relations announcements in open forum?
Two thousand and twenty-five dog licenses are now available at Townplex Office by mail or online. You can see the Townplex webpage for details and application if mailing. Real estate and personal property bills due February third, two thousand and twenty-five. The tenth edition of the Massachusetts State Building Code has been published and is available for use. Until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, you may apply under the ninth or tenth edition of the code. All applications received after June thirtieth will be issued under the tenth edition of the Massachusetts State Building Code. The Town Hall will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, the observance of Martin Luther King. There is an opening for a member of the Council of Enging to be filed until, to be filled until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. The Charlton Council on Enging is a municipal department in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter Four, Section eight B, for the purpose of coordinating and carrying out programs designed to meet the needs of an Enging in coordination with programs of the Department of Elder Affairs. Anyone interested should fill out a talent bank form found on the town's website and submit it to Mary Devlin at townofcharlton.net for consideration no later than January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Charlton Public Library will host bookkeeping for beginners on Thursday, January thirtieth, and that's from six to seven-thirty at Dexter Hall. That's presented by Scott Herbert, and he's the owner of Charlton B Company. It's free and open to all Charlton residents.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to appointments and resignations.
All right, our first appointment this evening is for police dispatcher. The board was asked to sign a signatory appointment for Kayla Dayton as a police dispatcher to allow her to provide sufficient notice of her, to her current employer. Sixty-one applications were received for the position and interviews were offered to twelve candidates. You're asked to reaffirm her appointment. Her start date will be February third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
We have a motion, second, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey Kayla, welcome to the show.
Hi Kayla.
Very excited to have you. Good job, Deputy Chief.
All right, our next appointment is for traffic controller. Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint Babe Booker as a traffic controller. I recommend the board make the appointment. Term of appointment would expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, appointment of poll workers. Town Clerk's office is asking the board to appoint the following as poll workers until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and I concur. David Elaine Donald Blanchett, Francine Berger, Claudia Blovet, Eric Bollinger, Greg Brunel, David Karen, Nancy Chalk, Janine Chenard, Lou Ellen Corkum, Gerald Dobell, James Edlam, Laura Fitz, Laura Ferguson, Kish Figusa, Sue Gelb, Linda Guiles, Bill Guy, Joe Habler, Laura Hammer, Bradford Howard, Lonnie Howard, Audrey Johnson, Pete Johnson, Donna Kenny, Patricia Lamaro, Judith Maskell, Amelia Warren, Margaret O'Connor, Bonnie Seifert, Elizabeth Shagru, Adrian Smith, Sylvia Stepien, Louis, sorry, Louise Shagru, William Shagru, Robert Sullivan, Rochelle Webb, Lisa Westwell, and Diane Wolf.
So moved.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next we have a resignation for the Council on Aging. Attaches a letter from James Howard resigning from the Council on Aging effective January seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Howard will be ninety in February and has decided it is time for him to step down. The Council on Aging would like to thank Mr. Howard for his service on the board. I'd also like to thank Mr. Howard for his years of service. The board should accept his resignation and the letter thanking him for his time is in your side folder. We've posted the opening. Hope to bring a recommendation for appointments in your next meeting.
Motion with deep regret, but I hear he's running for selectmen, so we'll see what happens.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have a Notice of Retirement of the Police Lieutenant. Attaches a Notice of Retirement from Police Lieutenant Keith Cludier effective July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. After thirty years of service to the town, the board doesn't need to take any action at this time, but a certificate will be completed closer to his retirement date.
Mr. Chairman, just through you, and I won't say on behalf of the board, but from me, a sincere thank you for Lieutenant's service to the town. Thirty years is a significant achievement, and he's given a lot, and I just hope he knows that everything he gave was very much appreciated.
He'll see we missed, but we have till July to like hassle him, so that's important. See, Rob, we take care of you, just so you know.
Moving on to schedule appointments.
All right, we have the penning of Fire Chief Rob Barton. I have to see if we can get Karen in here for the oath of office.
Yeah, how can we harass like Keith for the next six months?
Aye.
Rob, Rob Barton.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon.
As Fire Chief of the Charlton Fire Department.
As Fire Chief for the Charlton Fire Department.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and be bound by.
That I will obey and be bound by.
Such rules and regulations.
Such rules and regulations.
Of the Town of Charlton and its Fire Department.
Of the Town of Charlton and its Fire Department.
In accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Charlton.
In accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Charlton.
And the general laws.
And the general laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Aye.
Aye, Rob Barton.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
Of Fire Chief of the Town of Charlton.
Of Fire Chief for the Town of Charlton.
Five bucks if you make it hurt.
Make it ten.
Rob, bring up the rest of your family for pics. Do you want to give a speech now?
I don't know if I want to give a speech. You know, I, you know, I have, I have an incredible. Please introduce yourself.
And you, don't know, use your formal title, please.
Fire Chief Rob.
Well done.
I want to thank, you know, Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen, you know, for this opportunity, like I said a couple of weeks ago. I have an incredible support network with my family. My wife Sharon is here, my three boys, Justin, Connor, and Nolan. My mother-in-law Jean is here, members of the Charlton Fire Department, and, you know, and the countless friends that I have that have come to support me, and it's been an incredible transition so far, you know. But if it wasn't for the team that I had the absolute honor and privilege to lead, it would be so much more difficult. But Chief Knopf has done an incredible job with the department, you know, and, you know, I'm fortunate enough to be able to kind of, you know, take over and just continue the phenomenal work that he's done, so, you know, really am blessed and looking forward to working with everybody as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask your indulgence so that the chief and family can really enjoy themselves tonight, and if we could do new business out of order, I'd make it a motion to approve the Fire Chief's contract, if it's okay with you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous.
Now you can celebrate. Mr. Chairman, may I recommend a two-minute recess to let the folks go have fun?
Robbie, get a family photo.
Yeah, Rob, get some pics. Yeah. Good job, Karen. Oh, if you want to.
Get a picture of them because I was supposed to get a picture of them anyway.
Right?
It's not twenty miles away.
It's not the time to leave like two minutes late.
Honestly.
Rookie mistake, but we've all been there.
We're right on forty-four right now, so. Yeah, we can do that. We can get it because we're supposed to open up the hearing afterward, too. I'll be, if you want to call it back to order, we'll make it.
Yeah, sure. All right, we're coming back from recess and we'll call the meeting back to order.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, once again, I'd like to take us out of order and make a motion to approve the Police Chief's contract as well.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous.
Chief, you're good.
We just denied your contract.
All right.
Six forty-five?
All right, six forty-five poll hearing for City Depot Road. Attached you will find a request from Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to install one joint-owned pole on City Depot Road for customer service upgrade. Also attached is a notice that was sent to the Butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Chief and DPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been raised. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the Butters, and I'd recommend the board approve the request.
Public hearing notice. The Charlton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six forty-five PM in Meeting Room One Thirty-seven, Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Zero one five zero seven, to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. City Depot Road, National Grid, to install one joint-owned pole on City Depot Road beginning at the point approximately three hundred and forty-four feet northeast of the intersection of Brookfield Road and City Depot Road, installing pole two for customer service upgrade. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing.
Anybody from National Grid to present?
Thanks for coming.
Nope, we got nothing written on it, so.
Anything online?
I'm not seeing anything online.
Be quick. All right, seeing none. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the poll hearing.
Second.
Poll position.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we got one more for you. By the way, thank you for coming.
I believe there's two today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we got a few minutes.
Yeah, three minutes.
Make yourself comfortable, get some water.
Um, all right, so do you want to go down to three?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if that works for you, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't know.
I'll, I'll, I'll wait till you read it.
Yes, yep. So recently I was contacted by Attorney Jonathan Silverstein of Blatman, Bobrowski, Haverty, and Silverstein, LLC, who provides special counsel services for particular matters to the Planning Board and Zoning Enforcement Offices. He was recently contacted by the Overlook to provide legal guidance on their master plan work. In order to avoid any conflict of interest on this matter, Attorney Silverstein has requested that he and his firm be designated as special municipal employee. I recommend that the position of special counsel specifically the firm Blatman, Bobrowski, Haverty, and Silverstein, LLC be designated special municipal employee.
Always let's see Jonathan around, I will make that motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Pete, you want to do four, too?
Yeah.
I know, I'm jumping around, too. All right, citizens petition to call special town meeting for the purpose of changing the town clerk position from elected to appointed. On January eighth, the attached petition calling for a special town meeting to consider changing the town clerk position from elected to appointed was submitted to our office. Per the Town of Charlton bylaws, Chapter fifteen dash three and MGL, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, signatures from two hundred registered voters of the town are required to call for a special town meeting for the purpose outlined in the petition. The required numbers, number of signatures has been certified by the town clerk. Per the bylaws, such meeting shall be held no later than forty-five days after receipt of such request. The latest date to set the meeting would be February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Our office has identified the date of Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, sorry, Bill, at seven o'clock PM to be the best available date and time to hold the special town meeting. Once the date is set for the meeting by the board, we will provide a warrant for approval at your next meeting.
Just so everyone knows, that's my birthday, so cakes are optional. That being said, make the motion to set the hearing for February eighteenth at seven PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Aye.
Nice. All right, I got six fifty.
Killing it today. Pete, good job.
All right, poll hearing for North Main Street. Attached will find a request from Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to install one joint-owned pole on North Main Street to feed Transformer on property of number ten North Main Street. Also attached is the notice that was sent to the Butters. The request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Chief and DPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the Butters, and I'd recommend the board approve the request.
Public hearing notice. The Town of Charlton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six fifty PM in Meeting Room One Thirty-seven, Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Zero one five zero seven, to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. North Main Street, National Grid, to install one joint-owned pole on North Main Street beginning at the point approximately four hundred and seventy-five feet southerly of the center line of the intersection of Worcester Road and continuing approximately fifteen feet in the southerly direction. National Grid is installing a new pole to feed Transformer on the property of ten North Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Anybody wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Do we receive any concerns in writing?
No written concerns received.
Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request.
Good motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming. We'll see you next month. All the select, all the student reports.
We've got ten minutes.
You're coming.
Finish up and do business.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, with the beginning of the new year comes the beginning of our deliberations around budget. At your last meeting, Selectmen and Selectmen requested an item be added to the agenda to discuss police needs as they related to an incident that occurred in Amazon. I'm asking for guidance from the board relative to your overall priorities to guide the budget development process. I've included a list of new position requests that were included in the departmental budget requests and middles. The Finance Committee is scheduled to begin their budget hearings with each department starting tomorrow. What say you, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to sound like a parrot, as I kind of say the same thing every year, but again, I'd like to put capital requests whenever possible before operating expenses. But for those operating expenses that are needed, I'd recommend that we continue with our, or my overall belief of public safety first, inclusive of DPW when necessary, followed closely by the schools as we can. Obviously, we're somewhat constrained with partnership with Dudley, but again, anything that can help them out, and then, you know, from there, I would just be hesitant to add too many new positions only with the amount of potential capital projects that we have coming down. So really, very similar to what we've done the past few years, and as most townspeople know, as well as FinCom, we're in pretty good financial shape right now, and I would hate to do anything to jeopardize that. So if that's my two cents, I'm officially done with that conversation.
Mr. Chow, I simply agree with Mr. Bobrowski on prioritizing public safety, which would include highway and obviously schools. I think what we just saw recently, and I think we got very lucky, you know, with the Amazon incident. And I think a lot has come to light that needs to be addressed, since I think that is a budget priority.
Same for me. I think the public safety scores, same like us, like slash just.
You good?
I'm good. I got my direction. Now it's up to the Finance Committee. We'll be back.
Nice.
Should we go down to the student select person report? Rosalie, you want to start?
Sure. Okay, so as we know, I break my report up into three sections. So I'm first going to start off with the athletics. So the girls and boys varsity basketball teams have had great seasons, both with four wins and three losses on their respective teams. There's been an influx of new freshman records on the indoor track team, so way to go freshmen. And if you are interested in attending any of the sporting events, please check out the Shepherd Hill Rams website for more information on their game schedule. As for the arts, the Trium Music Honors Society has recently ended its application submission process. Applicants to this club have now been admitted to the prestigious group, so our congratulations to new members. Shepherd Hill's award-winning show choirs Fantasy and Illusion are proud to perform at their home show on February first. Tickets for the event can be found at www shepherthillchoirs ticketle.com. And Drama just finished a spectacular production of their newest play, Hamlet Noir, so thank you to those who attended. As for school-wide initiatives, the Shepherd Hill students are currently making video advertisements for their classes, so these students are helping the guidance department by showcasing the activities offered in their favorite courses. And lastly, the NHS is finalizing its February service project, a kids' night out for younger children in the school district, so more information to come.
Thank you.
Good job, Rosalie.
Emma, would you like to give us the Bay Path?
So as for school-wide, as we continue into the new year, our school is dedicated to creating an environment that supports student success and personal growth. Since December, we have successfully implemented the Yonder Pouches school-wide, which has helped maintain a focus on learning by limiting distractions from devices. This has fostered a more engaged and connected student body. As for sports, our athletic teams have been performing admirably since December. Additionally, our winter sports teams, including basketball, cheerleading, bowling, and indoor track, have started their season strong with athletes showing great promise in their respective sports. For our shops in trade areas, we are making space for the opening of a brand-new diesel technology shop at Bay Path. This new shop will provide students with the opportunity to gain hands-on experience working with diesel engines and systems, preparing them for careers in the growing field of diesel mechanics. And for Student Council and Steering Committee, our members are working on organizing and planning for Valentine's Day with candy grams available to store students as that day approaches. We are also hard at work planning our proms and fundraising for future events and graduation. And as always, don't forget to stop by our new Minuteman shop when you visit for a delicious meal or any service provided by our salon. It is a great spot to support student initiatives and school spirit. Thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, so third and fourth quarter tax bills have been mailed out to property owners. Third quarter tax bills are due on Monday, February third. This time of the year, the tax collector and assessor's office typically get bombarded with lots of questions as to how the tax bills are factored, since there's typically a pretty significant variance between the first and second quarter bills. We have put an infographic up on our site to try to explain how the budget development process leads to setting up the tax rate and final tax bill. We have a copy of this information on the town website and social media pages if anybody wants to take a look at that. On Thursday, January sixteenth, we're going to be conducting an upgrade to the phone system here at Town Hall, which also extends over to all other municipal buildings except for the schools. We're anticipating that the phone lines will be down between nine AM and nine thirty AM to conduct the upgrade. This is planned outage, and it won't have any impact on nine-one-one system in the event of an emergency. So if you're just trying to call the office, you might have an issue, but if there's an emergency, shouldn't be. And just a reminder about open burning. So outdoor, outdoor burning starts tomorrow. We'd like to remind residents that plan to do any outdoor burning to obtain a permit through the Charlton Fire Department. Burn permits are available through the Fire Department's website. If you do plan to burn, be sure to activate your permit each day you will be burning and to monitor conditions to be sure that there's not a high brush fire risk. We have seen that recently. We've all seen what's happened out in California. Obviously, we're not in those dire conditions as they are, but, you know, whenever there is no snow on the ground, but open burning starts, Fire Department gets busy, so that's what I got.
Guys coming right up on the top of the hour.
All right, seven o'clock PM, we have a nuisance dog hearing on Willie and Bear owned by Mr. and Mrs. Burnett. Please find the attached public hearing guidelines for dog complaints for your use during the hearing, which outlines the procedure for the hearing. Letter hand-delivered to Mr. and Mrs. Burnett by the Charlton Police Department with the date and time of the hearing. Thirty-seven pages of reports, photos, and finds by ACO Kelly Flynn. Sixteen-page complaint form filed. Sixteen-page complaint form filed by Richard Kelly. Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, nuisance or dangerous dogs, orders for remedial action, appeal, violation of order. Under Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, once a complaint is received that a dog is a nuisance by reasons of vicious disposition or excessive barking or other disturbance, the Selectmen shall investigate or cause to be investigated such complaint, including an examination on oath of the complaint, and may make such order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog as may be deemed necessary. Is that order that the owner may then appeal to the District Court? In the guidelines for the complaint, the chairman has all present that they will be speaking, sign in on the matter. So if you haven't already, please sign in over here. Once everybody who plans to speak signs in, the chairman will read the complaint, and I will be swearing in by oath all of the persons who are to give testimony on the matter before the board. Having all persons who will give the testimony, have you guys raise your hands and repeat the oath I'm about to give, and then we'll go through the remainder of the procedure. Let everybody sign in first.
I think you just like swearing people in, to be honest.
I will swear.
I can tell. Pete, once again, killing it today, just so you know. Smooth.
Alright, so if you've signed in, please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name. You solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony I'm about to give to this matter will be the truth,
The truth.
The whole truth,
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth,
Nothing but the truth.
Acknowledging this oath
Acknowledging the oath.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury,
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Correct. Chairman's all yours. Put the official complaint.
Do you have it?
Oh, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch. I have. It counts. No, that's the citation.
Citation.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're just trying to find the actual piece of, the like, the page we had to get to. Oh, is this one?
Yes, that is.
Dear members of the Charlton's Board of Selectmen, I am writing to express my deep frustration and concern regarding the ongoing issues with my neighbors at Fifty Dresser Hill and their two large pit bull mix dogs. Despite repeated efforts to address this matter through the appropriate channels, the problem remains unresolved and is becoming increasingly dangerous for my families and others in the neighborhood. For years, the dogs have been entering our yard daily, sometimes multiple times a day. Initially, it was just one dog which would run away when we shooed it. However, they have since added a second dog of similar size and breed, and the situation has escalated. Neither dogs wear collar on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. An especially alarming incident occurred, the two larger, the larger of the two dogs entered our yard as my daughter was walking. Our leased Shih Tzu poodle mix. The dog began pushing our dog around and even chased both my daughter and our dog to our front door, with the dog trying to push its way into our home. Given the dog's size, appearing to be over a hundred pounds, it was almost impossible to stop it physically. My daughter contacted the Charlton Animal Control Officer, Emily Sears, for assistance. Emily stated that she's been receiving numerous complaints from others about these dogs being in the yards or on Route thirty-one. So Emily then called our neighbor, and my wife met the woman of the household halfway to return the dog. My wife weighed clear that the dogs needed to be contained in their yard. There is a leash law in this town, and they are in violation. Despite Emily's intervention and the fine they received, the issue persists. On October twenty-eighth, my daughter saw the larger dog in the road on Route thirty-one, which then wandered into our yard. We documented the incident with video and informed Emily, who transitioned the case to Kelly Flynn as Emily went out on maternity leave. Kelly coincidentally witnessed the dogs loose on Route thirty-one herself the same day and spoke with a neighbor who falsely claimed the dogs were never loose. Since then, we have repeatedly contacted Kelly with photos and videos of the dogs in her yard. Despite her attempts to address the issue, including fines and multiple visits to the neighbor's home, the neighbors remained unresponsive. It appears their actions or lack thereof are intentional, as other neighbors have also reported loud parties and fireworks at all hours of the night to Charlton Police. The male of the household frequently rides his extremely loud motorcycle up and down the road, seemingly for the purpose of making his presence known. This situation has gone beyond a nuisance. We fear for the safety of our small dog, who is always leashed. We are concerned about the potential for serious accident on Route thirty-one. As I am eighty-two-year-old, eighty-two-years-old, handicapped and required walker, I feel these dogs may push me down, as they have already pushed my daughter when she's tried to enter the home, the house. We urgently need action to ensure these dogs are contained in their own yard. My family and I, along with other neighbors, should not have to live in fear of these animals. I respectfully ask for your immediate intervention to resolve this matter and ensure safety and peace of our community. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. Sincerely, Richard Kelly.
Mr. Karen, that's what I'd like to point out, based upon what you just read. I just want to make sure that it is clear to everyone here. This hearing is regarding a dog. So any references to motorcycles or fireworks? Not that that may not bother people, but it's irrelevant. And that is not a part of this conversation. This is a dog hearing.
Uh, next will be report of the Animal Control Officer. Yep.
There you go.
Hi, my name's Kelly Flynn. I'm filling in for Emily right now. So we have had repeated calls about the dogs being loose many times at number fifty-eight Dresser Hill Road, which is right next door to the Brunettes. And we have had numerous calls of the dogs being on Route thirty-one. I myself saw Lily on thirty-one. I believe, I believe, I believe saw Bear on thirty-one. And then we recently, about a week or so ago, had a gentleman named Chris Camasi who called me in the morning, and he was trying to get the dog to get out of the middle of the road. And that dog happened to be Lily that time. Somebody had thrown a bag of food, like probably fast food, out on the road, and the dog was eating out of it. I'm concerned about, of course, I don't want Mr. Kelly to get knocked over. I mean, the dogs, from what I've seen so far, have not done anything like aggressive. I'm not sure, I wasn't there when they were with your dog, so I'm not sure if they were trying to play with that dog or if they were being aggressive, but it can still cause a problem. Somebody could get knocked down. And I, I mean, I have seen video of the dogs defecating and urinating, like on their Christmas tree that they put out. And I'm also very concerned that people are trying to get the dogs off of Route thirty-one. That's kind of on a bend right there. So if there's a, Karen's come fast on that road. When I stopped to get Lily out of the road, then, nobody slows down, even though I had all the lights on my truck going. So I'm very concerned that somebody could get hurt, and of course, I don't want to see the dogs get hit either. So I have sent numerous letters and citations to the Brunettes. I know they did pay the first citation. I don't believe they paid any of the other ones yet. I don't know if they were waiting for today's hearing or. I did speak to Mr. Brunette a couple of times. I brought him a copy of the hearing laws, and I did suggest a few times to put in an electric fence. They have electric fences now that are wireless, so I feel like that would really solve the problem. Mr. Brunette did mention to me a couple of times that he thinks that it's their two-year-old that's opening the door and letting the dogs out. So I do have suggestions about that at the end, for recommendations. But I don't know if Mr. Kelly wanted to speak or anything.
He, he'll hit his opportunity after you're complete. Are you, does that with you?
Usually I do the recommendations after it, but he talks, but I.
Uh, Mr. Kelly, would you like to come up and say a few words on this?
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, the only reason I, you know, after that incident, it's been going on a few years, and I haven't said anything. The dog was just a nuisance, but then he had two dogs, and then when they come over one time, they knocked my daughter, chased her into the house. That was the last straw. I had to make a complaint. And I didn't want to. Who wants to make your neighbors mad at you, you know? But I just want the dogs to cease trespassing on my property, that's all.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Anybody else present that would like to provide testimony?
Absolutely. Don't consider stand.
You can sit.
My, my name's Jonathan Brunette, owner of Fifty Dresser Hill Road, owner of Bear and Lily. Just want to start off by saying that those dogs are not at all aggressive, in any form at all. If they did chase their daughter in the house, it was purely playful. The dogs don't even know how to bark, alright? And as far as them saying my motorcycle's loud and I'm obnoxious, stuff like that, it's not true. Everything that I own is, it's all legal. Everything has mufflers and whatever. But I've never added another dog. Since I moved into the Town of Charlton, I've had the same two dogs. I've had the same two dogs for eight years, so never added any. And the multiple attempts that they made to contact me about my nuisance dogs, they never did. They went straight to the authorities. I think the neighborly thing would have been, you know, to come over and, you know, talk to me about it, and I would have done something, you know, but instead, you know, I get the cops showing up at my door and, which is fine, I get it, I get it. They shouldn't be over there. But all of these incidents have occurred when I'm not home. I work from three-thirty in the morning to six o'clock at night. Everything happens when my wife and my daughter's at home. I don't know what goes on when I'm not home. So I've made efforts. I have ordered an electric fence for the dogs, a wireless one. I've also put a stop on our slider door, because my daughter likes to just flip the latch and open the door and let the dogs out, because they like to eat her snacks, you know? So I have put a stop on the door, and I have ordered the electric fence. Like I said, you know, they could have just come over to me and, you know, said, hey, this is what's going on. You know, could we do something to remedy the situation? And I'm more than happy to, you know? But as far as being dangerous dogs, they're not at all. You know, I live five minutes up the street. I can get them over here, and they're going to lay on their back, and you're going to rub their belly, and they're just, they're not dangerous at all. So, yeah, I have made, you know, some attempts now to remedy the situation.
And just for clarification, we do hear, do dangerous dog hearings and nuisance dogs, they're separate hearings? And nobody, nobody's made accusations that these dogs are dangerous?
Well, they said they do feel threatened, you know, because of the dog. So that would imply that the dog is dangerous, correct? It would. But they are not. They're not.
So, true you, which is all well and good.
Yep.
But I'm going to come back to, again, nothing personal. I couldn't care less about the motorcycles and your mufflers.
Absolutely.
But to someone who doesn't know the dog, and I have two dogs, one of them is also a pit mix, Swedish dogs.
Yep.
But to someone who doesn't know the dog, they don't know. It just, I'm just asking you to keep in mind. Someone to whom the dog is a stranger, they don't know if the dog is dangerous or not.
Yep.
And then regardless of everything else, I'm happy to hear that you're taking these steps. Because it doesn't change the fact that it boils down to something very simple.
Yep.
Right? You should have the right to enjoy your home peacefully, as should they.
Absolutely.
And the town has leash laws that just simply need to be followed.
Absolutely.
And from what I've heard, if you're taking these steps, we have recommendations.
Yep.
And, you know, neighborly relations for what it is, some people are comfortable talking to neighbors, others aren't.
Seems to be a common trend these days. Nobody likes to communicate.
But some people aren't, and, you know, to each his own. It doesn't make anyone a good or bad person.
Yeah.
So I just want to, I want to make sure we're sticking to the subject, nothing personal, and just addressing the loose dogs.
Pete, through you.
Alright.
So, Mr. Brunette, to be honest with you, I see no evidence here at all that they are aggressive. I think they're probably playful.
They are.
One thing I will say that they probably like to wander.
Oh, they do.
Trust me, I get it, I get it.
They don't even know how to bark.
But if you put yourselves in like our position, like, once we get a complaint like this, again, to the chairman's point, there's the dangerousness versus a nuisance.
Absolutely.
The dangerous is obviously a lot more serious.
Yeah.
When it comes to a nuisance hearing, it's much more of a, and again, candidly, like, looking at our perspective, it sounds like there's been a history, for whatever reason, of having to call the, like, A C O. So now, at least just speaking for me, we may have to take action. Joe, I don't want you to, by hearing that, that that means anything's going to happen to the dogs.
Yeah.
This is just more of, at least from my opinion, what the recommendation I would be making is to formally declare them a nuisance, just so we can require the conditions, which honestly, the conditions are already what you are going to be doing.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, there's a good chance we'll just never see you again. And I mean that in a very nice way.
Which is preferable.
Yeah.
I mean, I might see you on my motorcycle one day, but that's, but outside of that, I mean, I think that this will, I think, give the Kellys peace of mind. It'll give you peace of mind that the A C O and the police don't come to you. But like, you know, again, I just ask that you put yourselves in our shoes as well to say, alright, we could have.
Listen, I absolutely, I understand, like, since I've moved in here, I've had horses in my yard. I've had other people's dogs. I've had their chickens, like, as long as they're not aggressive, I don't care. You know, just the other day, I had a neighbor's dog come in the yard, and they were playing with my dog, you know? I get it. As long as they're not aggressive, I don't care. They're dogs. You know what I mean? They're animals. They love to explore, you know? If they're not, you know, destroying property or harming anybody, I don't see the problem with it, you know? But I, I mean, I get it.
I guess, I just want.
They just don't want it on their property.
Correct. I just want the Kellys to feel comfortable along with their pup, with their daughter, everyone else, they're like, you know what? Two dogs up the street, don't care.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I'll just say out of mind.
I get it, I get it.
And my two cents on this one, aside of, you know, Mr. Kelly, and I can see that you love your dogs.
Absolutely.
So just for sake of them, you know, they wander on those streets and they can be hit. It's about us, but also about the animal. They can protect themselves. That's your job to do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
This, quite candidly, I think this is going to be one of our easier hearings.
Yeah.
Because it sounds like you are amenable to everything we're doing. I think this protects the Kellys. And maybe you guys can be friends one day, but if not, you at least don't have to see each other.
Yeah, I mean, hey, I mean, this is the first time I'm meeting him.
Yeah, so either way.
My vacuum got delivered, and I had to go get it.
See, I'm glad we're all laughing at the moment, you know, that's important.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, would you like to present your recommendations?
So my recommendations to the board are as follows. That the dogs Lily and Bear be deemed a nuisance, and the following orders be put into effect.
Number one, that Mr. and Mrs. Brunette install a fence to keep Lily and Bear on their own property. If a physical fence is too expensive, then an electric fence be installed. Both dogs would need to have electric collars, and the system would have to be kept in good working order. For example, the collars need to be charged regularly and fitted properly. That until the fence is installed, the dogs must be kept on a leash with an adult in control, or the dogs must be on a tether, which is in compliance with Mass General Law's Chapter one forty, Section one seventy-four E, which is the tethering and confinement law. And then I went on to say, which we spoke about a little bit, but Mr. Brunette stated that he thought it was his two-year-old daughter that was opening the doors and letting the dogs out. So I recommend installing a childproof mechanism on each door leading to the outside of the house so that the child cannot accidentally let the dogs out. Which I know, when I had, my daughter was little, they have these, I don't know if any of your doors have knobs on them, but.
Yeah, but those have dead bolts. Those stay locked. You can slide in your. Yeah, but tho- those have dead holes. Those stay locked. It's a sliding door that only had the flip locks, so I put the, uh, the bar on the door so they can't open it. But actually, under section, uh, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven Mass General Law, you cannot deem the dogs as a nuisance because a child under the age of seven let the dog free of their confined, uh, you know, constraints.
I do have that law.
Yep.
Over here. I have to take a look at it, but, um.
They cannot be deemed dangerous or a nuisance.
I would just say to them, Mr. Chairman, through you while Emily looks it up. We don't have any evidence that, outside of your, uh, proposing that it is your younger daughter who who's trying to protect her.
Exactly. That's, it is.
So, but we, but we don't know that.
Exactly. But it is the board's duty, and it's also the Kelly's duty to provide sufficient evidence to prove me wrong, to prove that wrong.
I would say the onus is upon you to s- to.
I can pull up the law if you'd like.
No, no, no. I'm I'm not talking about the law.
I really don't. I just don't want them labeled as nuisance dogs because.
I'm talking about the evidence.
Yeah, a- absolutely, absolutely. I have it here if you'd like.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the, whether the dog's a nuisance or not, doesn't change the fact that the dogs are repeatedly running loose.
Trespassing, correct?
Loose. The town has a leash law.
I understand.
The minute your dog walks out that door, and so this is going down that road, the minute your dog walks out that door, you're in violation.
Yep.
Now, I know you've been cited at least once. I believe you've been cited multiple times. Haven't paid the other fee, uh, fines yet as well.
Yes, because I was waiting on the hearing, yeah.
Right. No reason to wait for the hearing. So, she wouldn't have issued the citation if it wasn't warranted. So, you got the citation. That money is owed regardless of this hearing.
Absolutely.
So, you haven't paid that fine. Now, you're gonna sit here and say, I'm not a lawyer. You're not a lawyer either. But I I touch my ACOs and I'll go at them all day long.
Yep.
The bottom line is, I don't care who lets the dog out.
Yep.
I have the same issues you have. I have dogs running down my street, shitting on my dog, my lawn, all over the place. No one's happy about it, okay? But the reality is, your dog leaves the house, I don't care if it's your do- your kid, your wife, or you.
Yep.
It's a violation. And that's what we're talking about and that's what has to stop.
Absolutely. I I agree.
Thank you.
So, that part of the law is, um, I mean, I could read the whole thing, but it it does say, however, that no dog shall be deemed dangerous solely upon growling or barking. Goes on a little bit further. The dog was protecting or defending itself. The person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime. Um, and then at the time of the attack or threat, which we're not talking about a dangerous dog right now, we're talking about nuisance. But it says the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public and such person or animal was not authorized by the owner of the premises to be within such enclosure, including but not limited to a gated fenced-in area if the gate was closed, whether locked or unlocked, provided, however, that if a person is under the age of seven, it shall be rebuttal- a rebuttable presumption that such person was not committing a crime, provoking the dog or trespassing. I don't really think that pertains to the, uh, child letting the dog out of the house and it being a nuisance dog. I think that's more for a dangerous dog. And they're saying that if a child under the age of seven opens a gate and goes through the, a gate, they're not.
Lets the dogs out.
Well, it doesn't say that here.
I would, Mr. Chairman, what I would recommend is that we all take a step back for a second, take a deep breath. Because I, at at this point, by declaring a nuisance, it allows us the opportunity to require that these things that you are voluntarily doing anyway.
But I've already voluntarily done them.
But we, again, we don't know that. We can't enforce it if you haven't. So, again, I appreciate where you're coming from with nuisance. I, again, just speaking myself, I can assure you that I don't think anyone on this board is looking to vilify you or go after your dogs. This is simply a matter of, again, at least in my opinion alone, by declaring the dog's nuisance, it becomes an enforceable piece and more than likely, we're never gonna see you again. And I mean that, again, I mean that in the nicest way possible.
Absolutely.
So, I get where you're coming from about the nuisance, but again, taking it from our perspective, I believe, at least for me, that by declaring nuisance, it allows us more enfor- enforceability. But again, enforceability is gonna be as soon, like, how quickly do you think that you'll be able to get the, uh, uh, electric fence?
Starting, so it should be here in three days.
Right, gotcha. Yeah, so then, uh, so for the next three or four days, while you, you, you're like gonna walk them on a leash.
Yep.
And then after that, you train them with whatever needs, the flags, et cetera. Yeah, yeah, a- and and you already have the bar installed. So, like I said, I I just wanna take a, take a step back and just be like, all right, let's see, you know, let's, let's all get back on good terms here so that we can just say, let's move forward and then we never have to talk about it again.
Yeah, no, that's fine with me. I just, you know, I I like the law to be acknowledged. You know, I I I get, you know, you can say whatever you wanna say, but the law is the law, you know, so.
I think it's the, I think it's potentially the applicability and interpretation thereof.
Absolutely.
And I can interpret twenty laws twenty different ways. I'm not a lawyer. Doesn't make me right.
Yep, I get it.
Remember how we said this was gonna be an easy one? That's what I think? So, I don't know if the board or like, Pete, I'm sorry through you.
I I would just like to add, this sounds like the, it sounds like you're solving it and you're working on it. Don't come back in front of us.
Yeah.
Don't give us a reason to call you back in front of us, because the second time, w- we tend to get a little less patient.
Yeah, we, yeah, I'd say in general, this board and previous iterations, as long as the the dog has not been dangerous, which again, I don't believe it has, uh, we almost give like a free pass.
Yeah.
To be like, all right, look, we're gonna do this, but don't worry about it.
Should we have like a timeframe and an inspection?
That was my next question. It sounds like you're gonna have it in like the next three days.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we say like within, like, can, like Kelly go out within thirty days, just kinda literally just be like, oh, yeah, that's, door's locked. Oh, yeah, I see that you have a, uh, uh, electric fence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, I know it takes some training for electric fences too, so I wanna make sure. It's it's not like you just, like, oh, yeah, type of thing, so.
I I mean, at the end of the day, we're looking to correct the behaviors of both whoever's letting them out and and the dogs. I mean, I'm all, I'm all for, on the impression, you know, if he satisfies the requirements of the recommendations and that we don't see him again, you know, it it's a done deal. But if if there's another report of a loose do- I mean, it's gonna be up to the board, but if there's another report of the loose dog, then I mean, it's a no-brainer labeled nuisance dog. I I I I'm sympathetic to you and I understand that you don't want it, the dogs labeled as anything nuisance, dangerous, um, but we also have to correct the behaviors.
Oh, absolu- absolutely. I agree. It's just, it's difficult for me because, like I said, I work from three-thirty in the morning to six o'clock at night, six days a week. I'm never home. It's my wife and my daughter that's home. My wife's eight months pregnant. My daughter's two and a half years old, you know? I I can't, I can't be there all day, you know? So, it's it's really up to them, you know?
Well, biggest issue, congratulations on the pregnancy, first of all. That's the, I would say congratulations on the pregnancy, because that's really the big thing here, but, uh.
And I would simply, I would stress to them, um, a long time ago, when my kids were little like that, we got a dog. And my little one would love to open the door because she wanted to see what mom was doing in the backyard. And our dog, that dog was a boxer mix, big dog. We just blow her out of the way and get out.
Yep.
And because she kept doing this and everything else, we wound up, right, the right thing, sadly, having to rehome the dog.
Yep.
And I would just stress that, when, and I think those who know me know, I don't like doing any of that stuff with dogs.
Yeah.
Um, they're family, but.
Absolutely.
I would stress to your wife, and it's hard to stress to a two-year-old, I get it, but I would make sure she understands the gravity of this. So, you're not home. Do you wanna lose your dogs? No, you don't either. Take, make sure they take it as seriously as you are.
So, Mr. Chairman, unless anyone else has any comments. Oh, actually, we have to, do, is this a public hearing officially? Do we have to close it?
Closeable. Yeah, uh, close, um, closed testimony or any all questions and then we can deliberate.
Cool.
Anybody have any further questions?
I'm good.
I I I would simply state, before we go into this, you know, as far as the board's concerned, I'm, I'll go along with the board. I'm happy either declaring nuisance now so we have the enforceability or like you said, as long as he doesn't come back. If he does, then it's nuisance. Either way, I'll support it. I just wanna make sure this is done.
So, Mr. Chairman, a- a- at least for discussion, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Lily and Bear be deemed a nuisance and all these orders be put into place with Kelly going out hopefully, uh, within thirty days, just to verify that the collars are on. Um, and again, nuisance only because of the enforceability aspect, but again, I'm honestly not expecting that we'll ever cross paths on this issue ever again. So, anyway, that's my motion, at least for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second discussion.
No, I agree.
Good.
I'm I'm fine waiting it out. I mean, we've history, history of the board, we've given people chances, so that's my position.
I'm fine with that. And if you would consider, he did say he's already ordered everything. If animal control verifies it, there may not be the need. But if it does hap- if, but if they verify before next meeting that it wasn't done, we can declare a nuisance then.
I I would just say, I appreciate what Mr. Brunette has has done to date, but knowing the paper trail and history, again, I would just prefer to have this for now, knowing that nuisance is li- literally just a legal termination.
Do we know that for sure? That we need to have the dog nuisance in order to implement all those?
In order to enforce, um, the order, yes. You can't really make an order without the dog.
So, we know that for sure, so that's a fact.
So, I'd just like to just say something if I can. So, when I spoke with, uh, your dog officer here, um, I requested, you know, she's sending, you know, pictures or whatever, because I didn't know if it was my dog or the neighbor's dog. There's a lot of dogs that run around and stuff. And she was more than willing to, uh, send them to me, so I gave her my email address and everything. And, um, then, you know, I ran into her several occasions since, you know, she said she would and, uh, she never did. And then the last letter that I got, she said I can go file a police report and, you know, we'll look up the images and stuff. So, I still have never been provided proof that they've been on anybody else's property.
So, he, Mr. Brunette did ask me for pictures, um, at, when we were initially doing this, um, the people that were making, the Kellys did not want to be, um, they want to remain anonymous. So, I realized if I sent the pictures to him at that point, they would know where they were, who was making the complaint. Once the Kellys decided not to remain anonymous and they were coming forward, I did two times recommend that he. Because I have to give my report to the police department and they redact whatever needs to be redacted. So, Mr. Kelly did make a, um, request, a public record request and got everything. And, um, I did twice send it in a letter saying, if you would like to see the records and the pictures, that you should make a request to the police department.
But you had also told me twice in person that you would personally send them to me and you never did. I I just, so if there's no, if there's no physical photo or video evidence of the dog on somebody else's property.
There is.
I I I understand. I mean, I understand your concerns there, but that, the either doors were, dogs were leashed on the property or leashed off the prop- move.
No, I I get it. I get it.
Question for ACOs.
Yeah.
So, 'cause I don't think we've ever actually asked, if a dog is declared a nuisance dog, does the board that declares it a nuisance dog, can the same board come back, say, three months, six months later and rescind that, vote to make the dog not nuisance?
No. So, if you're thinking of that, I mean, that might be a good idea to give him a chance to remedy things a certain timeframe. And then, um, if there is another incident, um, they could be deemed nuisance at that point.
And I I'd be happy with that. You know, like I said, because there's no.
I mean, I get it. I really do. And I I just don't wanna make more of this than it is because the only thing we're saying by calling your dogs nuisances, uh, are that we can enforce what you're already doing. So, and again, knowing the paper trail that we have on this one, I would just feel more comfortable saying, let's just move forward and again, hopefully, never have this discussion ever again. But that's just.
But 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 without calling him a nuisance dog, how can we enforce that those things are going to be done?
We can't.
Exactly.
So, we don't have to enforce it. If it happens again, there's no discuss- I mean, there's, next meeting, he's a nuisance.
And I'm more than willing to have her come, like you said, within thirty days and and come and see the things that I've put in place to keep them on my property.
So, but but you knew about it for a while, right? Because this is going on for a while. So, you could have have put those fences in and do all of that that had to be done. So, coming here to us, for me, that would make a difference. If you would come and say, it's all done and I'm not waiting two weeks, two, two days or whatever, uh, they'll be already inspected and you're coming here in front of us saying this is already done. For me, that would, I would be, uh, more towards, you know, not calling it nuisance, but.
Like I said, I I've been trying to speak with my wife to get her to keep the dogs inside while I'm not home and.
And and one of the dogs was in the yard today.
Yeah.
I mean, I I think we've heard, and I think each board member is pretty gonna make a decision, so I'd.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna convince each other.
Yeah, call for a vote on on Mr. Borowski's motion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Aye.
I I'm honestly, this one, I don't wanna abstain. It's just I'm torn because I wanna support Bill. I I I agree with his positions. I do agree with his positions. Whether we could keep the hearing open, I'm in, it's just, it's just.
We got three, four, one against, one indifferent. I mean, it passes.
I guess, man, I think you're a good man. I'm sure you, I'm sure your wife and daughter are wonderful and your soon-to-be other child. Your dogs are probably incredibly nice.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, just.
I mean, and I.
To save us all from headaches, just do what you can, definitely.
Well, absolutely, yeah. I ju- I just don't want, you know, any, you know, insurance repercussions or or anything. If I'm labeled as a nuisance dog, but we don't, we we don't know that.
Well, we kinda.
I mean, I'm not an insurance agent. I don't.
If the dog was deemed dangerous, that would have an impact.
Yeah, that's why this is the lesser.
I had a a friend who used to live in town and their dog was, uh, and their homeowner's insurance actually pulled their policy and would not insure them because it's a dangerous dog, not because of nuisance.
I know, but it's like a gray area because dangerous and nuisance fall into the.
There is not a gray area.
But there is a delta, a very significant one. That's why we're being very clear that these are not legally speaking and or even practically speaking, I don't think they're dangerous dogs.
Yeah, they're not.
Yeah, so.
They're not. I I I would ask every one of you to come over and stop over anytime you want and come see them.
Like I said.
Yeah.
Do the, like, do, like, do that fence and then just enjoy your family with the dogs in your yard and.
That's all I'm trying to do.
I get it. I get it. Cool. All right, hopefully we don't see you and then, uh, en- enjoy the rest of the winter and the family.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right.
See ya.
All right. Do we have any other business unknown at time of posting?
I have a lot to talk about. No, I'm kidding. I have nothing.
Hearing not. Our next meeting will be, uh, January twenty-eighth at six-thirty. And do I have a?
Motion or turn?
I have a motion. And a second. All in favor?
Aye. Pete, thank you. Nice job tonight.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Kelly.